He took his duke off. I was disappointed. He's supposed to be wearing his duke.
I can warn him here.
Call to order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting for December 2nd, 2014. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schar?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundin?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Item three, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes for November 18th, 2014.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Second, please.
Second.
Call, roll, please, Misty.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye. Correspondents, start with Ed.
None.
Mike?
The only thing I had was an email asking about item G, and I didn't have a whole lot to give him. He was a member of the PFC, and I told him that Vicki would be sending a memo out today on it.
Okay. Steve?
Couple of questions on the park expulsion program, but that was about it. Nothing really.
And Diane?
Yeah, I think I might have gotten the same memo that Mike got, and I asked Steve to give that party some answers, because I didn't feel I could answer them. And I also did have some calls from the constituent that is working on the Christmas tree lighting in the park, and that's lit, I mean, that's decorated but hasn't been connected to power yet, so.
The only thing I have is I've got a, I think we all got a memo from Anita Martin. Misty, would you read that letter that she sent?
Letter from Anita Martin. "Thank you again for the opportunity to speak at the November 18th city council meeting. Could you please read the following into the minutes of tomorrow's December 2nd city council meeting? We would like to clarify a statement that was made at the November 18th council meeting on behalf of Citizens for a Better Environment, Lake Mills, CBE Lake Mills. I stated that Unlimited Renewables LLC told the DNR it will be applying for a new site-specific air permit. The company does currently hold a registration operation permit pertaining to air. A site-specific permit would involve a detailed application, requires public input, and mandates more testing and reporting. I incorrectly stated that Unlimited Renewables LLC is covered under a WPDES water permit through Daybreak Foods, Inc., Creekwood Farms. Unlimited Renewables and Daybreak Foods in fact have their own separate water permits through the Wisconsin DNR, both of which expire in December 2017. I apologize for any confusion this may have caused. Thank you, Anita Martin, volunteer with CBE Lake Mills."
And that letter will go on file as read?
Just sort of connected with that, I think we had an odor issue tonight on the way here, so I hope that somebody called it in, because I did not, so.
Okay, questions and public comments, seeing none, we'll close that. Item six, city manager's report. Steve, if you would?
I provided late a couple of the RFPs that I had prepared, so that may be one of the things we might want to discuss tonight is looking at those over again and considering whether we want to wait until the next meeting to make a decision. There's no hurry on that. And a reminder that the city council at large term will be on the ballot in the spring election. Campaign registration statement, nomination papers, and 50 to 100 qualified signatures and the declaration of candidacy must be filed with clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on January 6th, 2015. These forms and instructions can be printed from the GAB website or picked up in the clerk's office. The spring election will be held April 7th, and the spring primary will be February 17th if needed. That's all I have.
I just want to comment on the inspection of some of the trucks coming through town. It looked like, from the report that we received, that was an overwhelming success, and it did shed a light on some pretty good problem of some of the trucks coming through, so kudos to the chief and whoever else was involved in that.
And also, kudos to the citizens who brought that problem up.
Absolutely. Okay, acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the Lake Mills Zoning Board of Appeals for October 2nd, 2013, the Public Works Board for October 14th, 2014, and can I just back up? Is that, should that be 13 or 14 for the first, for item A?
13.
It is 13, okay. And finally, the Senior Advisory Board for October 9th, 2014. They'll go on file as read?
Actually, that zoning board one, is there more than one page? I got one page, but it seems like it's unfinished?
I agree, yeah.
That's all I have as well. I'll have to take a look.
Yeah, I had the same concern.
It stopped in the middle.
Right, boom, there's nothing there.
Board of Committee appointments, I have none. Miscellaneous license, I have a tavern operator's license application. This is a new one for Matthew R. Clark. Do I have a motion for approval of?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Please call the vote.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Item C is the discussion and decision on designating South Main Street for east or west side parking. Misty, would you read the motion, please?
Motion 141211, authorizing the city manager to send this motion to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation regarding the location of parking lanes on South Main Street. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, that the residents of South Main Street have been surveyed regarding the preferred location of parking lanes. Section 2, that the council has considered the data and evidence and evaluated the information and selected a side parking lane. Section 2, the city clerk is authorized to send this motion to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation indicating the council's preference on the location of a parking lane, and to take such actions as necessary to incorporate side parking lane in the construction of South Main Street. The city council does hereby approve the motion and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Discussion. Steve, you want to start us off?
We did a survey and worked with the Department of Transportation to make a decision on the fact that we wanted three lanes, two through lanes and a parking lane, and then the two bike lanes. The question that that came back with was is they wanted us to designate which side of the street. Normally, you'd do a utilization survey, but the utilization on South Main Street is not probably heavy enough to justify that, and so based on the survey, the majority of the people felt that the east side was the appropriate side, and that should work out okay. There'll probably be some areas around the curve where they may not put in parking or modify the parking concepts.
I thought you were, I thought it was the other way because of the fire hydrants by the high school.
Well, the original request from the fire department was that they wanted the fire hydrants on the east side of the street because of the high school.
That's what I thought.
No, that really is not a, the way you would set it up is you could run the water main down the west side, put your hydrants on that side, just run a long line across the other side of the street and pull it up into the north end of Catlin and actually have a better hydrant situation, because you already have no parking on that one side there, and the other side will have parking, and so it would be, and it will be closer to the high school. So from a technical standpoint, the fire hydrant condition really isn't a significant player in the overall situation if we decide that the east side is better, because the only real location that he was concerned about as far as fire hydrants was the high school.
Majority of the homes are on the west side, correct?
I think they're, you're right.
Because you've got, the east side's got the golf course, it's got Toples, it's got the fish hatchery.
Yeah, I guess from, I guess if you're laying in lines, it would be better to have them on the west side, and then make the corner at Catlin. I mean, the fire hydrants, not the...
So our motion would read, west side?
Parking on the east side. Parking on the east side.
East side.
Or west side.
What would it, again, I don't have, I meant to bring this, look at, dig that survey back up, but I didn't have the survey results. What, majority of the residents said they wanted parking on, they preferred parking on the?
East side.
East side.
East side. It was just, I updated the survey. At that time, we had 32. I updated it to, and so it ended up with 41, and it was still slightly like 13 to 11 percent or something like that, that they preferred the east side. But it wasn't a substantial difference, but it was preferred on the east side.
And that's staff's recommendation?
Staff didn't make any comment on it at all. I don't see either direction having a significant effect on how the city would be affected by the parking.
That just seems strange, because you would think that you would have the parking, unless you don't want parking in front of your house, but parking on the west side with the golf course and the fish hatchery and that on the east side, but...
I think a lot of it might have had to do with the people who are concerned about the school. They tend to have a lot of parking, and they prefer them to be closer to the school and not have to cross across the street to be able to go to school events. And I got the impression most people felt comfortable with being able to cross the street from a residential standpoint.
I actually seen, I've seen more parking on the side streets than on Main Street by the school.
Typically, they try and stay off of Main Street. They don't, they don't try not to get on the Main Street until they absolutely have to, but it does happen on a regular basis.
Counsel?
I would go with consensus.
Yeah, if they have, even if it's only 11 or 13 percent.
On the east side.
That's what they ask for. I mean, majority vote, even though it's a close vote.
Diane, you good?
I was going to say, the numbers you were giving us before, you said these numbers, those were the people who wanted it on the east side?
Yes.
What were the numbers for the people who wanted it on the west side?
Well, I can't remember the exact numbers, but the, I remember that the east side had like a 2 to 3 percent advantage over the west side. So, well, it wasn't a huge number, and we only had 41 of the 100 surveys we passed out. 50 percent on a survey is still a pretty good number. The majority of those felt on a slight basis that the east side was the better side.
And I came down Main Street this evening, there wasn't one car parked on Main Street.
To a certain extent, there was a lot of comment that because of winter parking restrictions, people try not to park on the street in the wintertime anyways, and so they didn't think either way would be a huge issue. That's why, you know, either was a pretty substantial player in the overall vote, too.
Well, I'll go with the east side. I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve. Motion 141211 with parking on the east side.
I'll second it.
So we'll put the east side on both blanks. Any other discussion? Misty, would you call a roll?
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Item D is the discussion and decision on a request for proposal on the city real estate sale. This is item D.
There were two proposals passed out probably tonight.
Yeah.
And they, we had originally had a discussion on how we wanted to do it. The one with the nice picture on it does it where it requests people to make a proposal to buy the lot. And the other one, that's just a form, is actually requesting a real estate agent to make proposals to the city on being hired to be our sales rep for selling the lot. We ended up, and I put in both of them, we have more than just Lot 11117 South Main. We also have Campus Street, which is now going to be available, and we have the industrial park land. So I included both of those in there with the 11117 South Main Street, and so you can look at and think about, I had a lot of people asking me that were interested in the property, why don't you put it up on a RFP that says we can bid on the property rather than having to go through a real estate agent? And the other one is basically requesting an RFP, just like an engineer and a planner, that says you submit your proposal, we review it, we interview you, then we hire you to be our real estate sales representative. So those are the two options that are available here.
Well, can we do an RFP, Steve, initially, and if, and then we have the right to refusal? And if, with the right, RFP with a right to refusal, and if that is not bringing forth a purchaser, then going back and using a broker?
Yes. Both of them have in there that the council has the right to reject any and all.
So if we could save money without and still move the property, it would seem like we would just put it out and test the waters with an RFP.
You know, we had discussed that, and we kind of decided to go with the realtor anyways to try and give an opportunity for more people to see it and view it. But that discussion, obviously, you know, there, we do have the option on the one. Both of them say, the one here says the city reserves the right to postpone receipt date, accepting or rejecting any and all proposals received in response, to negotiate with any brokers submitting and to cancel any or all parts. So they both have a pretty substantial package in there for being able to cancel out. So if that's your desire, we could do that, too. I did, you know, have a couple of people say, why are you going through a broker when I'm here ready to buy? But like we had discussed, the other issue was is making sure that everybody has an opportunity to see it, and going through a broker does give them more time and puts it in a place where people are looking rather than on a RFP hanging on the city website. So those are, you know, some of the things to think about and debate. The idea that we could do the first one, and then if we don't find anything acceptable, we could drop to the second one is also a very legitimate option.
With the RFP, could we not have a listing, not a listing, but notice, would be the correct word, a notice in the paper, in the leader for?
Sure.
That an RFP has been posted?
Yeah, there aren't a lot of people, there are fewer people looking for RFPs in the newspaper than there are on the website. That's just, you know, kind of a, to get it well advertised is always a problem for the city. But I guess from my standpoint, if we recover our costs in the initial one, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for to get our money back and to get that property developed. And so those would probably be the two criteria we look at when we looked at the, you know, people responding to the RFP. Do they cover our costs in the property, and do they put on something, are they going to develop something that generates enough tax dollars to make it worth moving the property to them? If they're just going to sit on in that vacant lot, that doesn't do us any good. The second one is, one of those properties is the electric utilities property. That's controlled, we'd have to get a CA, it's called a construction authority, but it basically allows us to sell that property, and then we have to prove, if we don't get what the appraised value for that site is, we have to, you know, we have to give them a reason why we didn't, and submit that to them. So those two, that one property would be a little bit more difficult to sell through that route, but especially, I have an appraisal from 2010, that's 100, I think it's $119,000 for that lot. But those are some of the things to think about and consider as we look at this and say, okay, which way do we want to go?
Yeah, and we did talk about this quite a bit last time we met about this, and, you know, my thoughts are, we would just really be doing the city a disservice if we didn't try to get as many people looking at those properties as possible. Who knows what's around the corner that somebody's really looking to bring into a city instead of just settling with the first person that says, I'm here, I've got money. We might get more than what we, than what we're asking for if we get more people looking at it. The only way to do that is to get somebody that does this for a living. Get out there, get this stuff canvassed out there, get it out into the hands of everybody in the state to look at it. So it's nothing against any specific person here in the city that would love to have that property, would like to put something in there. You know, they still have to fill the requirements that we're going to ask of what type of business they're going to put in there. But what else is out there that we would miss if we did that?
Well, if we go the route, and you're talking about having a broker, we can then increase the price to cover the broker fee as well.
Sure.
Because I would want it to cover our purchase price, our cleanup price, and the broker's price, the taxpayer's not paying anything on that, and I'm not looking at making money out of it, I'm just making, as Steve has said, to cover our costs and get the right person in there that's going to develop it right away rather than set empty.
Yeah, you're right, exactly. In the long run, getting somebody in there that's going to build it, and it's going to pay for itself in the long run.
Yeah, I don't care what goes there, I, so to speak, I just care that it gets built. I mean, we have to be cautious what goes in there, but...
Yeah, we do care what's...
But at the same time, it's, the importance is getting something built there that's compatible.
Compatible with that area, exactly, or those areas to add to the, to the tax base.
I have a question for counsel on that. If an individual wants to come in there and put in a business that is suitable based on the zoning, do we even have any say on that? What they can put in there and what they can't?
If they are disclosing it, what they're purchasing it for as part of their proposal for the purchase, we could say, no, we don't have to sell the land.
Okay.
As long as we're not doing it for any discriminatory purpose.
Okay.
And that's what the one RFP does, right? They're coming forward with a plan.
Yeah.
Right? And that would be the two or three people that are interested locally.
We did the same thing with the old city hall.
Yeah, the person had to submit what is it they wanted to do with the building.
Okay.
And then it was approved based on what they wanted to do.
Okay.
Actually, it turned out pretty good in the end.
Yeah, very well.
I guess I wasn't miked. Sorry.
Okay, why don't, Misty, why don't you read the motion? Now, we have two. This is 12-1-2 is the first one, right?
I think that's the only one.
Oh, that's the only one, okay. Yeah, would you read that, please?
Motion 14-12-1-2, directing city manager to advertise a real estate request for proposal. Whereas, the city council of the City of Lake Mills has established certain standards and procedures for the sale of city-owned real estate, and whereas, the city council of the City of Lake Mills has requested that the city staff prepare a request for proposal for the sale of city-owned property, and whereas, the city manager and city staff have prepared the request for proposal, and whereas, the city council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it therefore moved the second day of December 2014 by the City of Lake Mills Council, that the city council does hereby direct city staff to advertise the request for proposal and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Well, discussion, and if I could just recap, the council feels that a broker would be prudent as long as all costs are recovered.
I'll go with that.
And then that the RFP is suitable to the council for time and type of business? Yes, okay, that's, everybody good with that?
I just have one question, because it just came to me as we were talking about this, and I'm asking this because I don't know, you can only put out one type of RFP. You can't lump them or put them together and allow both individuals and a broker to work together or work on this at the same time?
Couldn't we, actually, yeah, if there's two people interested, tell the broker, we're going to look at these two while you...
Generally, what, you don't want to lump them together in the RFP. Once you get a, the brokers pick, you sign a contract with them, then they work with the individuals. You can't mix them in the RFP, because the RFP doesn't, it's either a contract, either you're advertising for a contract or you're advertising for a sale. You're not advertising for...
Okay, so you can't, you can't pick and choose and can't do both. You have to do one or the other.
So you're saying that we would have to choose a broker?
No, we don't have to choose a broker, but when you do the RFP, the RFP would be either for the contract, hire a broker, or to sell the real estate.
Ourselves.
Right.
So it could be both, I mean, could be either.
If we did the one RFP, we could reject all the brokers and then do another one, or vice versa. We could do the real estate one, and if we didn't find anything satisfactory, we'd go the other way. The debate that I felt that I was hearing was is that we wanted to give as many people an opportunity to see the sale as possible, which in my opinion does go through the broker.
Yes, and that's, yeah, the reason I asked is just for clarification, just to make sure we weren't missing something, or I wasn't missing something. But that's exactly how Rudy stated it. That's my, the way I feel on it.
Everybody good with that?
Do we need to make an amendment?
We just need to pick one.
We need to pick one.
Oh, for the last line, that, for the line about advertise the request thing, you have to add something in there then?
Well, it...
It just allows me to advertise the one you've selected.
Yeah.
So, yeah, all you have to do is tell me the motion allows me to advertise that one. That's not, that needs to be done.
So it doesn't need to be in the motion?
No.
Gotcha. That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
So would I be correct in assuming that... So would I be correct in assuming that when you start moving on this, you will notify the local real estate agents?
We'll advertise it in the paper, we'll hang it on the website and we'll send it, we'll send it to any-
And that's how the real estate agents pick it up?
Yeah, and we'll send it to the locals.
Okay, got it.
Okay, item E, resolution fourteen dash sixty-two establishing garbage, refuge and recycling pickup and disposal fees. Mitzi, would you please read the motion?
Resolution fourteen dash six-two establishing garbage, refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section four, three, three of the city of Lake Mills municipal code. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement with John's disposal allows the contractor to increase rates based on CPIU. Section two, that John's disposal has notified the city of a rate increase as required by the agreement. Section three, that the council has acknowledged that the rate meets the contract requirements. Section four, that the council approves the charge of twelve dollars and fifty cents per unit per month, which shall apply to all private residences, commercial, industrial, institutional and/or agricultural, agricultural collection points in the city of Lake Mills. Be it further resolved, that this charge shall be effective upon publication in the official newspaper as required by the municipal code and effective January one, two thousand fifteen, and the council president is authorized to sign the resolution.
You hear a motion of acceptance of resolution fourteen dash sixty-two? Second, please.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Question. Steve, when they're referring to unit, is that a residential unit or is it, is it, is the recycling and the garbage combined as a unit to my property, for example? Or am I paying two units?
Twelve fifty is for your residential property.
Okay, and that's, that's considered a unit?
Right, but when they look at an apartment-
Right, it's got more-
It could be eight units.
You could have eight units, sixteen units, thirty, sixteen units, whatever, right?
No, that's a commercial property, so they get handled a little bit different, but duplexes-
Would be two units.
Two units.
Okay.
There are tri-units, there are-
I think that for the public's knowledge that the monthly charge would increase fifteen cents per unit is worth a quick passage of this because I think that that's so reasonable.
Yeah, I agree. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Item F, resolution fourteen dash sixty-three authorizing the Parks and Forestry Director to administer park expulsion program. Would you read the motion, please? Mitzi?
Resolution fourteen dash sixty-three authorizing Parks and Forestry Director to administer park expulsion program. Whereas under Wisconsin statute sixty-two point one-one and twenty-seven point one-four, the Lake Mills City Council has the authority to act for the government and good order of the city for the health, safety and welfare of the public and to exercise police supervision over all parks, parkways, boulevards and pleasure drives under its charge. And whereas the city council has heretofore received the attached information from the Lake Mills Police Chief regarding issues and problems stemming from lawless behavior within the parks in the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council wishes to delegate its authority to exercise police supervision of the parks to the Parks and Forestry Director working in conjunction with the Lake Mills Police Chief to administer the parks expulsion program in the manner that is outlined in the attached program. Be it further resolved that by so acting, the Parks and Forestry Director has the authority to seek the enforcement of the expulsion program in the event that an individual so notified under the program enters or remains on park property, which includes parks and street and piers, bike trails, walking paths and boat launch areas during the specified time period that such individual has been put on notice that he or she may not be in such areas and that if he or she is found to be present in said areas, he or she may be subject to prosecution for trespass. Be, be it further resolved that upon issuance of the expulsion notice, the individual served with such notice is afforded the ability to have such determination to issue the notice reviewed under section one dash one-one dash one of the Lake Mills Municipal Code, which incorporates chapter sixty-eight of the Wisconsin statutes.
We hear a motion of adoption of resolution fourteen dash sixty-three.
Yep, so moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
You know, this, this doesn't actually give the Parks Department, I mean, it gives Rob and them, they're going to monitor if someone's been expelled, then they'll monitor the pictures and let the police know, but the police do the actual administering, correct?
Right, but Rob would be acting as the property owner for purposes of doing this because somebody has to speak on behalf of the property owner.
Rob and staff, I mean, he's got the, the books and the pictures, so they all know who's been expelled and if they're hanging around in a park, they just simply call the police.
Correct.
Steve, that's after the initial, when they make a determination, Rob requests the expulsion.
So, okay.
And then they go through the process and then the police department can do it based on anybody's call, but normally it would be people in the Parks Department, but that part isn't really the part that we're looking for here.
It's the initial, it's the initial action.
Rob is acting on behalf of the city as the property owner to say, we want this person expelled and they will be arrested for trespass.
If they go back in the park property during that time period. So this just cleans it up and makes it clear that Rob does have that authority because the council's delegating it to them, to him. And also it clarifies that we do have the administrative appeal program within ours code already, that the initial determination to issue the expulsion notice can be reviewed. That review usually starts with, Rob would have to answer in writing the reasons for the expulsion notice and then it can be reviewed further if the person isn't satisfied, they can eventually come to the council. So that would be in a nutshell what that administrative review program is, it's already in our code. I just felt it was cleaner and more precise to make sure that every, all the authority is written in this ordinance or in this resolution.
So Chief put in a, put a, a very nice PowerPoint together outlining the problems and, and how to get around them.
Yeah, and the only modification of that PowerPoint which you saw at your last meeting is the change in the, in the actual notice because I put a line on the actual notice that puts the person on notice that they do have those appeal rights.
Okay. Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Item G, resolution fourteen dash sixty-four, Lake Mills firefighter reclassifications.
In the memo that I had sent to all of you, I, I informed you that it was kind of premature to have the resolution in front of you tonight when you're first hearing about what it is that we're proposing, so that resolution won't be on your agenda until the next meeting. But the fact that it's noticed, we can still discuss what it, what the plan is. And basically I laid it out in the memo, did you want me to go through it?
Would you?
Okay, I was just at the fire station and I met first with the officers and, and then I met with the membership at large to explain why we're proposing to do this. Because of the paid on premises program that we're going to try to institute in 2015, we can't do it with the rather large daily stipend that we were told by the consultant that we could use. We would have to pay them an hourly wage, which wasn't really a problem until we started looking at, well, of all of our firefighters that are paid stipends because they're volunteers, they wouldn't be allowed to be hourly paid as a paid on premises person if they took a shift and then at the same time respond to fire calls at other times and only be paid a nominal fee in the form of a stipend, which is how the fire department currently operates. So the choice was either hire the paid on premises folks from outside the department, use other department personnel from other communities to man the fire station during the daytime during the week for paid on premises and tell our volunteers, well, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't take a shift because you're a volunteer. I didn't feel that that was going to work out well within the department. And so the only thing I could see to get around this problem, unless we wanted to pay an extremely small stipend for paid on premises, which wouldn't attract anybody to take those shifts, would be to have everybody be hourly paid. So the paid on call people who currently get a fifteen dollar stipend regardless of how long their fire call is, would now be paid, if you approve this next time, would now be paid a ten dollar an hour wage. I worked out all the, the budget numbers to try to stay within the 2015 approved fire department budget. It should work. We can't guarantee it because no one ever knows for sure how many fires there's going to be in a year, but a, a fire call averages one and a half hours. So if you're paying personnel ten dollars an hour, they would be getting fifteen dollars for that call, which is what they were getting anyway on a, on a flat stipend. It's just that if the fire call is a lengthy one, it could be three, four hours, they would continue to get their ten dollar per hour pay until they are released from the scene or released from the station because there's always the cleanup afterwards. The numbers appear to work this way and I explained it to the firefighters tonight. I'm going to go back over there after we're done tonight to answer any additional questions that they might have come up with since I left. And when I met with Steve and the fire chief and with both Rudy and Steve Kerkovich, this was what came out of it, was the only thing I could come up with for a solution for how to make paid on premises work. If we don't want to do paid on premises, we could keep it the way it is, it's just there won't be a paid on premises, but we'll never find out if paid on premises will work during the daytime unless we try it. So I was given the charge by the city manager to come up with something to make it work and this was the something I came up with. So the, the memo laid out what the hourly pay would be for firefighters and officers and it also talks about standby pay, which from six o'clock on Friday until six AM on Monday morning, there will be four firefighters and one officer doing standby where they get ten, two dollars an hour to do standby, which means that they can't consume alcohol and they have to stay within a five-minute response time to the station. The theory is if it's a regular fire, not a big structure fire, but just a smaller call, one truck out the door is all that's needed. So the other firefighters can continue to enjoy their family activities or whatever it is they had planned for their weekend and won't need to respond unless it's a big fire, then they'll be paged out separately for an all-call to respond for a large event. That will help with family disruptions that firefighters end up having to deal with and it will also help with making the budgetary numbers work in the long run. And one thought is that if it works out really well, maybe we could do standby all the time with the firefighters, but that's not what I had in my budget to work with this time. And so, so those are the features of it, it's two dollars an hour standby pay, one officer every night is on standby, they do that now anyway, and then on the weekends it'd be one officer and four firefighters so they can take the, the majority of the calls on their own. And then during the day during the week, there would be two paid on premises persons receiving eleven dollars an hour to be at the station during the daytime. And, and if you approve it, we'll just see how that works. And I will be watching it closely to make sure that the hours don't creep up too high so that we get into problems with the Affordable Care Act. I don't anticipate that that will occur, but with these changes of firefighters looking at it in terms of hourly pay instead of a flat fifteen dollar pay, there might be some changes in who wants to respond and how long they, they are there at a response, so I will have to watch their hours very closely.
I have a question for you, Rudy, being a firefighter. I assume the call is when the, the time starts, when does the time end when he releases them, is that the officer on duty?
Yeah, after, usually you have to take care of the hoses, restock the truck and whatever else is involved.
And when that is completed, then the officer officially-
Yeah.
Tells the fighters they can leave?
Yep.
And that ends their call? Okay.
I guess the only thing that they would have to do then is have some type of a documentation then.
That they don't currently do now, so that'd be a new system.
Yeah, we, we're running fiber optic over there to the fire station so they get better internet and, and then Mitzi and/or Betsy will be setting up the timekeeping system that we're all using anyway. And then that way it can all be fed into payroll and they'll be paid, right now they're paid annually. At the end of the year, they get a, a lump payment of everything they've accrued, whether it's drills or incident calls or schooling, they're paid once a year. That won't work on an hourly payment basis. We have to keep track of it because of potential pension issues. Our full-time employees who are on the fire department will have to start having pension contributions for the pay that they're receiving at the fire station. So we have to run it along with payroll. So every two weeks they'll get a check or, no, they don't, nobody gets checks anymore, it'll be direct deposited, so it won't be an annual payment any longer.
Life used to be so simple.
Yes.
Well, just last week I stopped at the Delfield Fire Department and amazing, they're, they're dealing with the same thing. I mean, they're fighting the same issues and they're pretty much went to the same kind of system and they got some part-time guys and some paid on premise and some, but all the fire departments are struggling with it. I mean, it's, you know, it's nationwide.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait for the resolution, we'll take that, is it next time you want to do that, next meeting?
Yeah, I, I think next meeting would be appropriate because if, if we put this into effect, it would be effective January first, so it should be at your next meeting.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll move that one to future agendas. Anybody else have anything for future agendas? If not, convening to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering an oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved in. So at, at this time, we hear a motion to convene and close session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do it in five minutes.
We have to do a voice vote, don't we?
There needs to be a roll call vote and also just to inform the viewing public, you will be coming back into open session for a possible decision tonight yet.
Okay, so what she said. So we'll, we will be back. So Mitzi, if you'd call a roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Thanks for keeping me honest, I am.